Okay, all right, the light is on, folks. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Albany City Council meeting on this beautiful summer evening we've been having, and a nice summer or so. I'll call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor, can we get a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
You.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Okay. Well, we did have originally a special presentation for some life-saving awards, and then that was removed from this agenda item, and it's held over for the next agenda. But we had another presentation that was asked to come forward this evening. And this is from the mayor of City of Independence, John McCardle. And he is longtime involvement with the League of Oregon Cities and the Oregon Mayors Association. So, he insisted on coming to the council on behalf of the Oregon Mayors Association to state about awards that they give out. So, he tried to -- some folks behind the scenes here were trying to surprise me on this, and the beans got spilled, so I kind of found out about it a bit ago.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilors and citizens of Albany. As I mentioned, I'm John McCardle, I'm past president of the Oregon Mayors Association, also past president of the League of Oregon Cities. And it's my pleasure tonight to present this year's Oregon Mayors Association Mayor's Leadership Award for a large city here in Oregon to Mayor Sharon Kenopa. And this is the highest award that is given by the Mayors Association statewide. What I'm going to do in the next two minutes is read some of the comments from the presentation that was done at the recent Mayor's Award. And the six letters of nomination for this mayor from city staff, community, and regional organizations, and neighboring citizens, some of the comments were, "This mayor is a kind and generous person who works tirelessly for others and gets things done." And "The dedication makes an outstanding civil servant, and where it excels most is a leader in collaboration and problem-solving." As well as "The mayor is effective and productive in gaining cooperation from other local governments and entities. Spearheading regional projects and promoting dialogue among local government officials ensures this mayor brings people together." Said of this nominee by a neighboring mayor, "This mayor is also a person of great integrity. As an advocate, makes strong statements in support of her positions. Whether one agrees or disagrees with the position demonstrates leadership when others may practice politics." Another neighboring mayor said, "Leadership takes many forms. Some lead loudly from the front, others lead and manage from behind, encouraging, visiting, suggesting, personal action, coordinating with other governments in group. This mayor throughout her elected life has worked diligently to make the city a success." While many people talk about homelessness, this mayor helped found an organization more than 20 years ago to provide low-cost housing for residents in need. Several years later, when police dismantled a very large homeless count at the camp at the edge of town, the mayor personally picked up people from the camp to take them to appointments at the employment department and housing agencies. Today, the mayor continues to chair that board and helps to manage an organization that provides more than 130 housing units for low-income families. Mayor Kenopa believes in the importance of making the city and attract a place for families of diverse backgrounds. Recognizing that the historic downtown had become blighted, the mayor became a powerful advocate for restoring historic buildings and encouraging residential units in the area. The result is now visible every day as new businesses open, new residents move in, and projects are completed. In testimony to the extraordinary efforts of this mayor, one nominee writes, "When anything good happens in the city, the mayor is either leading or supporting it." It's my pleasure to, on behalf of the Oregon Mayors Association, to present in front of all you the Mayor's Leadership Award for 2017. Congratulations, Mayor.
How do you like to have a photo?
All sorry.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're actually fortunate that John works here in Albany, too. So, he lives in Independence, but he does work here, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was -- thank you, folks. That was -- you know, I've always just felt my whole life is you just, you know, you take a job and you work as hard as you can, and you put your heart and soul in it, and that's just kind of been me. Like I say, I'm kind of not a normal person, I guess, so -- but no, but thank you. It was very shocking, and I was astonished when I did receive the award at that conference. I had no idea, and it was, you know, very humbling getting the list -- reading the letters that were written on in support of that, so, but thank you, everybody. Okay, with that, we will get to scheduled business. Sorry, we kind of had a little diversion there, but -- so, this on tonight's agenda is a continuation of a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment from residential medium-density, RM, to mixed-use commercial, MUC, as described in the planning file CZ-0216. The property owner is Mr. James Winkler of Winprop I LLC. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:23 PM. And if you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact?
I did receive a couple of emails since the last meeting and this meeting, and the same procedure, I just deleted them.
And I did receive a couple yesterday. Last week, I did receive a phone call on one of the neighbors, and it was just over the process. They were going to be out of town, wanted to know how are they supposed to be able to find out what's being presented, and I just said it will be posted on the city's website by Friday. So, okay, does any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge a participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? Okay, for those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or the development code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I'll call for the staff report. David?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. David Martino, I'm the current planner for the city of Albany. So, thank you again. This is a continuation of a public hearing, so my presentation will be brief and is simply intended to remind us all of the proposal and the process that's brought us to this point. So, to summarize the request, the applicant's proposing to change the zone on five parcels totaling 12.69 acres from residential medium-density to mixed-use commercial. The subject's site is located north of Hickory Street and north of Pleasantview Way up in North Albany, and the site is within the Village Center Comprehensive Plan designation. And both the RM zone and the mixed-use commercial zones are compatible with that designation. So, regards to a timeline, the zone change is processed as a type-three land use application, which requires review and a decision by the Planning Commission and then to City Council. On April 3, the Planning Commission considered the request and denied the application. The applicant appealed the Planning Commission's decision to the City Council. So, on May 24, City Council conducted a de novo hearing and considered the appeal and continued the public hearing to tonight. So, new public notices advertising tonight's meeting were sent out on July 18, and the staff report with exhibits have been posted on the City Council homepage since May 19. The site was reposted with tonight's hearing date at two locations in the vicinity. And as of 3 PM, we received four written comments, three of which are in your council packets, the other one should have been provided to you at the dialysis. These comments were submitted in addition to the previous testimony that was given. Zone change applications are reviewed for consistency against five review criteria. These criteria are on the screen and also available as a handout right over here in yellow at the table next to the minutes recorder. Staff analysis found that the proposal satisfied the applicable review criteria as explained in detail in the staff report to the City Council. Therefore, staff recommended motions have been provided at your seats and are also contained in the staff report. Regardless of the City Council's decision, staff recommends that a tentative decision be made first in order to provide time to develop final findings and conclusions in support of your ultimate decision. Do you have any questions here at this point of meeting?
Council, have any questions?
David, on the motion for continuation or conditions, and to leave a blank, so will you provide the conditions, or how do we get those?
Those would be provided following council deliberation, and those would be conditions if you chose to select that option. That would be a set -- where council would insert whatever conditions of approval.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, okay, thank you, David. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the commissioners? This is script cues from our commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Winkler. I'm the president of Winkler Development, which is the sole member in Winprop I. And with me is Michael Roberts of LRS Architects. Michael will prepare and present a presentation that had mysteriously been unable to be retrieved from the server when Portland's electrical backbone fried last time. This will be the same presentation we were prepared to deliver when we were last here. And I'll sort of help him with a little comment here, Mayor.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. As you see, this is the first slide, it's really contextual in nature, just once again, identifying the site itself in relationship to North Albany. We thought at this time, just because we're talking context, that we had included at one time a review of the site in relationship over time. This kind of represents, you know, going back to 1994 and kind of representing how things change in all locations and as cities grow, and this is kind of a good representation leading up to now in relationship to how the site has changed. This, again, is just classic overview of the site, very little, only the single-family farms you see here, a few commercial developments on the lower side down by Highway 20. And again, we identified our site, the slightly colored portion on the top. Moving up a couple of years to 2000, you'll see more growth here, particularly in the residential side, and some more commercial growth to the lower side. Still pretty well established as far as the local trees and the mountain environment and landscaping throughout here. Moving up again to 2002, a little more growth, there's some -- I see many of the adjacent houses that are still adjacent to our property are still there and have always been there. There's a little more growth down below in relationship to, I think that's the hospital site, that's the lower side. Moving to 2005, again, it's moving forward again. You can see, this is kind of the next slide, actually, I'll jump to, because it just shows the beginning of the large commercial development over to the west side, as well as the large residential development, which looks like it's been cleared, primarily ready for construction on the right side, which eventually becomes the most adjacent neighborhood. That residential neighborhood is in getting to be built out now, as you can see, we're in the 2010, the commercial development is built out as well. And this is pretty much getting close up to where we are now with the development on both sides, with some additional growth up to this final point, 2016, which is representation of the first slide I showed you. This is the first overlay you're probably all seeing in relationship to how we've looked at laying out the site for housing and senior housing living. We're calling it Hickory Place. It's an overlay on the Google, as you just see, in relationship to its design. This is the same, again, this is to make sure everyone can read and understand, this is all residential multifamily buildings, and you can read them, the properties, or the thinner ones, the larger on the lower side, are also housing, but those are designated as seniors at this time. Again, kind of representing the same design and layout that's what we're currently working on here in a conceptual way. This is, again, it clarifies to everybody the zones as they currently exist, with the large RM zone over the majority of the property, and then the smaller SR zone on the right, which is actually outside of any discussion here, is not part of this comprehensive plan This is the current, the most current layout we have in relationship to the properties. Joe, if you want to touch on some of the units or talk a little bit about our mix, possibly, it'd be a good idea.
What Michael is illustrating here is two side-by-side projects. One is for families, and the other is for seniors. The part that is in a yellowish-green on the southern portion of the site is the senior. The two larger buildings contain roughly 78 units each in concept, and the smaller one about 46 units. The buildings to the northern portion of the site, the first thing I'd observe is that if you see the three buildings up against the adjacent subdivision, they are perpendicular, having the least possible impact. They are also set back a little bit further from the subdivision. The other thing I would point out is if you looked at the open space, our initial layout is roughly 2X the amount of open space required in your code. As we are very committed to sustainable and environmentally responsible design, that total represents four buildings of 24 units each and two of 30, for a total of 156 units. I might add that that 156 units represents about 2/3 of the site. In other words, it is built to a density of under 20 units per acre. Your current existing zone permits 25 units to the acre, with a series of bonuses that would take it to 30 units to the acre. So, we have proposed building at substantially less than one would be entitled to without asking for any zone change. The reason for the zone change was initially that your parking code wouldn't permit us to park senior housing any differently than family housing. That was subsequently changed, and in addition, that we had, as I've mentioned before, every intention of having services at the base of buildings, a mixed-use housing concept, hence the requirement of an MUC zone change. Michael, do you want to just go on from that?
We brought up some images from my firm itself. We can talk a little bit about my firm, LRS Architects. We've been established firm since 1976. To date, I think we're over 300 senior or senior housing projects in 30 different states throughout the United States. Half our office often is devoted to the senior component. This image here is actually just trying to show a larger-scale project, and these images going forward are kind of represent, one, the different types of projects and the different character we can, we deal with in relationship to design, but it also helps people zero in on the scale of project. This one at technically five stories is higher than the zone would allow. I think the next one brings it down a little bit, another style of senior housing that we've worked on in the past. This one is kind of coming down in scale, kind of represents kind of closer to what a three- or four-story senior housing component would be scale-wise for the site. So, again, it's just being representational of other projects, not necessarily this project. Another example, this one's actually down in Arizona, I believe. It's actually a three-story, again, it gives the scale of the size of a project, just for everybody to kind of get a feel for that. This is kind of a good example of the scale of a single-story. Typically, large developments have clubhouses or community centers, again, another example of a lower, more residentially scaled type of community.
And I might mention, part of our development method is to always have a community resource center in which services are provided, in which we typically will create some sort of childcare program. And typically, we would like the childcare available to not only residents of the community, but also families that might work nearby or live nearby.
Again, just representational, we are really just working schematically. This is another good example, and it's kind of very close to the scale of one of the, if we were in it for the senior projects we had shown before, those projects were at four stories to reach our count, so this is a good example of a four-story that's still in the range of the existing code as far as its height as well. We're just plus 45 feet here in that range for building up building of this size. Going back here, we wanted to, Jim already alluded to this, but we, it's always good to graphically represent it. This is a diagram showing the site in question, where if we use the code in relationship to the required open space, the green area here represents that. It's about 83,000 square feet. In comparison to what we're doing, we're providing double that, at 170,000 square feet of open green area. I think the majority of that is coming, as everyone knows, there's a large growth of old conifers on the site and trees that we've been trying, as you can see through the design, maintain as much as we can, maintain that open space, as well as some of the older trees that have been there for so long. I can identify these from our first slides, representing the site from way back. And this just represents collectively, if you were to just call it landscape area, the amount of landscape area that we're devoting to the site at this time. With the existing trees, again, this is another diagram, so people can have a better understanding of the trees we're trying to maintain at this time. The darker-toned green is representing trees that are existing right now, that we anticipate and intend to hold on to as existing trees, and then again, the lighter-toned ones is landscaping brought in to compensate and work that relationship with the further planning This is a first kind of conceptual idea of what a three-story residential project would look. This, again, looking solely at the multifamily residential, kind of giving an idea of its size and scale. Our ridge, as you can see here, is at about 41 feet, the lower eve at 30. This is, again, representational. Some of the buildings are a little bit longer than the others, but the scheme is pretty much straightforwardly, as you say.
And this was something that I would have mentioned in the prior presentation. We certainly have heard a certain amount of neighborhood concern. And I've tried to think, how would we address this in the most sensitive way and still achieve our objectives in terms of design quality and being able to preserve open space by using somewhat taller buildings? The conclusion we reached was, in order to have a mixed-use agenda, that we could restrict it to the area closest to the shopping center. So, this is an example of where, rather than talking about rezoning the entire parcel and the notion of a trip count, which I think many people in the community found difficult to get their arms around, we suggested, as an alternative, that without a trip count, we could do an MUC designation of, is it about 4.5?
Yes, 4.75 acres.
4.75 acres, closest to the shopping center, to have the kind of impact that we intend to have, but to de-stress the communications with everybody.
It makes great sense in this, in our mind, because for the senior, those are typically where you want a ground floor that can have that more commercial use, you know, whether it's a support office, whether it's a healthcare facility. We don't, you never really, we do not anticipate it in relationship to the single family. We never have, except for when we went for the zone change, we just decided to use the whole zone. So, again, this is our, kind of a way of talking with Jim and coming back and saying, if there's still contention, if there's still an issue, this is something that we would propose at this time. I'm sure there'll be, in my mind, what's the process going forward if there's, if this is turned at this particular agenda is favorable? So, I guess that's the next step, and this is kind of where we leave the presentation right now.
All right. Questions?
Question, you mentioned the daycare, possibility of having daycare. Would that be in the mixed-use commercial area? Would that be the intended location?
You couldn't have it anywhere else, because you have to, they're by their nature, they're commercial uses, so they would have to be in those.
I just want to clarify that. Thank you. I want to amplify that and say that we typically have childcare as part of the residential component, but then it is restricted to only the residents and their children.
Did I hear you mention that switching over to this design would eliminate the necessity for trip cap?
We had proposed, when the city and we were talking about this, we said, they were very apprehensive about a change to MUC. And we proposed as a way of assuring people that our intention wasn't to build, as one of the people has written you a letter, 1,200 units, that we would put a trip cap on the project. And if we're going to have just a small portion of the site with an MUC designation, then we wouldn't do that. We would just test it in the same way that you test any development, because I don't think there'd be that kind of concern. The concern that we heard, or at least I thought I heard, was neighbors concerned that we're going to do something at a vastly disproportionate scale. The multifamily portion that we're, that we have conceived of is at roughly 65% of the allowed entitlement. That is hardly what I consider high density or exploitation. It's a very systematic effort on our part to preserve trees and green space at the cost of density. And so, we would propose that if we have a smaller mixed-use commercial area, it is to accommodate the senior development and the ancillary services to that senior development.
Having said that, so what would be intrinsically wrong with simply keeping the trip cap limitations?
Well, because it would make almost no sense for the family project. None. And our analysis, we brought the traffic engineer, is that I believe we had a trip count of 392 trips. And that is roughly, that is less than we're entitled to under the current zone. And so, the notion of the trip cap was, was to make people think that an MUC zone wasn't going to be some attempt to create a mega shopping center or something of that sort, because it won't accommodate that. This is, our plan has always been to do residential, and by rezoning a small section to allow us to have mixed use in addition to the seniors, and this is senior service-oriented use. We didn't think it would make any sense at all.
So, Mr. Winkler, then, so where you have, so you're thinking of modifying your zone change request, then, to only do the shaded portion for the mixed-use commercial?
We're perfectly content if you approve the zone change we requested, but as an alternative, we, you know, to de-intensify the animad version that's been expressed, written and verbal.
Yeah.
and verbal, we would be happy to modify it in, in the interest of compromise to just a smaller area.
Okay. So there's nothing proposed for the RS five than what you'd propose? And actually, the RM and the RS five, you can be able to build pretty much whatever's going to be permitted in those zones?
Yes, RS five is.
Right, single family. But the shaded portion, so counsel, you do need to take into consideration is, once it's, the zone change is done to mixed-use commercial, that doesn't have to be the senior housing that is being proposed. Once the zone change is there, it could come through as whatever else is permitted in a mixed-use commercial. So that's something to take into consideration on that, so. And then, and also, when it comes to having a community resource center is, is wonderful for, you know, multifamily housing, but there's nothing binding you to that, there's nothing the city can do to have that continued as a use inside of any housing project.
Although I would say that I have built forty of them, but.
Yeah, right. It's wonderful you do that, but there's nothing that we can do to enforce that. Okay? Any other questions of the applicant?
Questions staff?
Uh huh. Okay. Oh, great. Yeah, Dick?
Yeah, I appreciate your working toward compromise. Man, I'm wondering, in the RM area, are you saving trees?
Yes, we're trying.
If you look at a photograph of that area, are there trees where you're planning to have the apartment buildings presently?
Michael, could you flip it back to that?
Yeah, I can. There'll be, there'll be tree mitigation, and you can go back and take a look. There are, the majority, if you take a look here, you'll see that, if that's, the best image I think would probably be that overlay, it's kind of hard to read, but.
Well, go back to the.
Yeah, the next one I agree is a little bit better. You can zoom in, I can't really zoom in here, but one of these two kind of represented, as you can see, there's that, that great growth there. There will be an impact of this development on it, but we're still, as you look at our plan, we're kind of going around it, developing to the west side of it, the parallel ones to the, on the east side, then we come down to the big open lot down there, adjacent where the seniors are. We have a few trees through, a good little group through there that we're going to lose some. Again, we're mitigating those and still trying to maintain them as they go south and around that road.
Yeah. Yeah. I would like, like to see more space between the apartment houses and the existing houses and the Truun Street development.
Right now, it's the MUC code, it's a three-story apartment.
Say again?
The, the driving factor there is code, the height of the building in relationship to our property adjacent to residence is a relationship, quasi-relationship between the height of the building and the base zone. Right now, I think we are at thirty feet away from the residential on the right with our, it's hard to scale these things because we're dealing with a very little, kind of scale drawing here.
I do not.
Yeah, Rich?
The trees in question here are all conifers?
No.
Douglas fir, white fir, that kind of thing?
It's a mix, I think.
Because if you're looking for a, a good tree next to your place, a conifer's not it.
It's a combination. We have a full survey of it, it's a mix throughout that whole area.
I think every tree has its drawbacks and every tree has its pluses.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, we will now be taking, Rich, did you want a question of staff before we did?
I have a question of staff. Is there the possibility of having current zoning and having an exemption in the current zoning that says, this is what you can do, that they could put, in fact, store kinds of things, senior services in the bottom of a, of an apartment? And have that written is, in, as a, as an exclusion instead of having to change the zone?
If I'm following what you're saying, you wouldn't be able to do that through this process. It sounds like what you're talking about is some way to, to sort of change what the regulations are for a particular site?
Or that specific thing. Because, you know, as I hear the back, the back of my head, when people, you know, yeah, we can, we can do this, but then something happens, it gets, it gets sold, the business that's there is no longer viable, so it, it turns into all commercial, and there wouldn't be anything we could do about that. If, if we had instead the same zone and you just okayed the specific type of business instead of changing the, the zoning, then it would be.
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, it's not possible to do that for a specific site. If you were to, to change what use could occur in that zone, you would have to do it across the board for the entire city, for every, wherever that zone were to occur, the rules would have to be the same, and the uses permitted the same.
Well then, never mind.
So that's, are that state law?
Is that, are you replying?
State and, and local law, so I think the, the issue is that if you were to have, I'll try not to go off too far here, but if you have, if you have these zones that occur throughout the entire city, the way that our code is set up is that you, there's a, there's a schedule of uses for each zone that tells you what uses are permitted and there's standards that apply to them. And, and it's sort of a matter of practicality that you couldn't have one RM zone have a different set of rules than a, than the same zone in a different part of town, it would just, you wouldn't be able to implement that. There, and I think I'll, I think I'll leave it at that, I think that's the.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, Ray?
Staff question again. Personally, I really liked the trip cap from the initial presentation to us and how it actually did in fact limit the developments. Taking that away, what would be the downside because of a smaller MUC?
Well, one of the things that I think that we would need to evaluate, this is our, our first time really seeing this alternative proposal, and we haven't provided any analysis regarding it. And maybe Ron will, will come up and talk to us, because there's a transportation planning rule that would apply for this kind of, for any kind of a zone, zone change, and Ron can tell us a little bit more.
I, I don't think it's feasible to take away the trip cap in its entirety. So if you reduce the scale of the zone change to just four point seven five acres, you still have to do a TPR analysis on that four point seven five acres. And if it's zoned on MUC, the worst case use you would expect that you would use for that analysis is some kind of shopping center site. That would generate about something more than a hundred peak hour trips than you could expect under the current RM zoning. And so there'd have to be an analysis of what the impact of those trips would be. And in my opinion, what you see is problems on Highway twenty, particularly Highway twenty and Spring Hill. And it is trying to avoid those problems that drove the original trip cap. We'd have that same problem even with a reduced zone change. And so if we went to reduce zone change, you're probably still looking at a traffic trip cap, just a different number than what it is today, or a full TPR analysis that looks at the backs of Highway twenty.
Thank you.
So, Bob, what I'm, geez, Mike, you're hot. You know, what I'm picking up on is kind of what Rich is, is talking about, it's nothing new, counsel's talked about it before, and that is having a little control over what's being built. And it, it's frustrating to anticipate the answer is that there's nothing we can do, but if there was some way that the developer built what he's proposed to, to build, I think it solves a, a lot of those questions. I mean, Ron's, Ron's right, I mean, the only way you can do the calculation is to assume some big commercial development, which would be allowed if, with that zone change. But I guess as we go through the evening and we have a chance to hear from the residents again, that's in the back of my mind is, you know, the developers come to us with the compromises, I'd like to figure out a way to work with them. But it sounds like in many cases, our hands are tied with local and state regulations. That's more of a statement than a question.
Well, yes, I think that your, your hands are tied to some extent if you want to, to limit the, the uses that are permitted in that particular zone. One of the things also, just to keep in mind, is that at this point in the game, we're, we're talking about only a zone change, and we're not talking about, you know, actual development. And so what the applicant's showing is, you know, their intentions and some concepts about what that, what that might be, but at this point, we, we can't even really get into evaluating the details of those concepts. So we're really just kind of talking about the zone change, and it's an important question that you're asking. Looking at the variety and array of uses that are permitted in that zone, are there any uses that you would find to be so incompatible with surrounding uses that you just wouldn't want to apply that zone at all? And the, the mixed-use commercial zone is intended to implement the Village Center Comprehensive Plan designation, to so, so to some extent, that decision of whether or not that zone is appropriate has been, not necessarily for the site, but does that zone implement the purposes of that comprehensive designation, that decision's sort of been made. Now your question is to kind of look at the more site-specific and say, in this particular location, knowing that that zone can implement that comprehensive plan designation, is it, is it appropriate? Are the range of uses acceptable within that zone based on consideration of the five zone change criteria? And so I guess the long-winded way of saying, you know, we can't really, at this point, limit the uses that could be permitted in any zone, but you can consider whether those are, that array of uses is, is compatible based on those criteria given this site.
Thank you.
Okay, Dick?
I see Truun Street coming out through here. Does that extend down to Hickory Street, or is that there then at the end of your property?
Is that where?
Yeah. Whoever can answer.
Right now, dead end, since I own the two acres that are designated RS five, and most cities I know believe in connectivity as a guiding principle.
That's a good idea.
We assume that you would extend Truun Street to Hickory.
And you own the property clear down to Hickory Street?
Mr. Winkler, I'm, I'm going to need you to come to the podium so that, for the microphone update. Thank you.
The six acres to our, to the immediate south of my property is the property owned by the Samaritan Health Organization, where they have planned, I believe, four medical buildings, the first of which has been completed. And so we would extend Truun Street to their property line.
Yeah.
And, and.
So how do people get out of your property? Do they have to go?
To Hickory.
Norbs on Truun Street and then out through the neighborhood and?
I would assume that they would be going to Hickory Street.
Well, how do they get there? Do they go west somehow and get to Hickory Street?
They go immediately south, they just follow along. Hickory had continued directly.
Yeah, we've been on the property, and we don't know that the people that do are going to want to extend Truun Street, do we?
I, I don't think we're communicating, and perhaps I'm getting that clear. The hospital has completed its road to its property line. I will continue the road to Truun Street.
So they have, they have extended the street up, that will connect?
That is correct.
Your street.
Yes, our streets, and, and in the purchase and sale agreement, the hospital was my cell. We have provisions for the extension and mutual crossoeesements and the like, so that won't be an issue. But I think the issue of, if, I have read some of the testimony of residents who objected to people driving through their neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'd be fine if we dead-ended it, it's just that I couldn't conceive of any city asking us to do that. I think the more likely path, since we also have a connection to the shopping center, is that people from the neighborhood will use Truun Street to come through our property to get a shortcut to the shopping.
As long as Truun Street will extend down to Hickory, I think that's a good idea, but can't guarantee that.
I think that would be one of the conditions that I would have assumed any city would have imposed. The RS five is, could either develop before or after, in all likelihood, it would be done simultaneously, and it's a site that would probably end up being between ten and fifteen or sixteen single-family homes or duplexes. But yes, the, the street would be connected.
So are you doing any street connectivity towards the west, towards the shopping center? Will there be any?
Our, our drawing does show a connection above that, the most southerly building, the, the S four building, I don't think you may be able to see it, but it would be.
It looks like some sort of.
A rectangle at the bottom. See the street continuing, that street runs into the, that roadway runs into the shopping center.
Okay.
And you can see the drive aisle for the three houses that are sort of over there.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? And you have staff. Yeah, Ron?
A point of clarification to talk about the local street. This is one area of town, we do have a local street plan that goes through the site that covers it. It extends the road paralleling Hickory from Spring Hill over to the shopping center and shows a connection down to Hickory. So anything that developed on this site, regardless of the zone change, would have to make those connections. That would be, at the moment, a condition of the city to comply with our plans.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so now we will take public testimony, and so then, as I recognize you, as you come forward, I'll be calling some names. So what will, what we would also ask is, I noticed some of the names did testify last time, so if it could end up being where you could pertain your testimony towards the new information that you just had seen off of this site plan. So any sort of, you know, information that was not presented from the last time, so the testimony's not repeated, it's pertaining to the new, the new information that was, is being proposed. So if you do have anything, though, that is a presentation or exhibit, then if you can hand that to the city clerk, Mary. Okay. Let's see, I have, let's see, I have, somebody signed up twice, and I'm not quite understanding here why, but it's Mary Arnold. So you'll need to state your name and spell your last name, furnish your address, but you signed up twice.
It was to speak on behalf of my neighbors who can't live here, and that was.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
So that was for, I see, for Bob and Patty Hauser?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, my name is Mary Arnold, and I live at nine nine four Truun Street Northwest. You spell my last name, A R N O L D. And I will only respond to some of the new things that have come up, because I did provide written testimony to the council by the due date, so it should be in your packet. A couple of things, I think the reason we're here tonight is my biggest concern. This is a rezoning request, not a development proposal. Mr. Winkler asked the Albany City Council to withhold the decision on the matter at the May meeting, because he was unable to access the documents he needed to share his development plans with the council. The postponement of the decision predicated on being able to share the development plans made no sense to me. Whatever Mr. Winkler proposes to develop at this stage, as we've said tonight, is not binding, and it should have no bearing on a zoning change. In all due respect, Mr. Winkler could very well toss those plans in the garbage on the way out of the meeting and turn around and sell the property once the zoning change is approved. I urge the council to not let proposed plans, however reassuringly beautiful they are, influence your decision. Rather, the decision should be based on whether the rezoning is the right thing for the community based on the review criteria, and whether such a rezoning is really necessary to achieve housing objectives in Albany, and in particular, fulfillment of the vision for North Albany Village. I submit to you that a rezoning is not necessary. There have been numerous assertions that the overwhelming negative response to the rezoning by North Point residents is a symptom of NIMBY, not in my backyard. However, I disagree. This property is currently zoned in such a way that multifamily housing is possible. As homeowners, we have always known this and have never disputed the fact that the property is to be developed. The current zoning is compatible with the neighboring property. The current zoning is compatible with the neighboring property, and no change of zoning is needed. I urge you strongly to consider the impact of this proposed change on those of us who bought our homes with the understanding of the residential land use zoning. We knew there would be houses there. We welcome our new neighbor. But please keep the density of this parcel at its current appropriate zoning. We will live here. We will be part of the Albany community long after a Portland-based developer who has forever changed our neighborhood is gone. Please, I urge you to consider to vote no on this. And I would also just add, in response to what was presented today, that, you know, this is the first time some of us are seeing this alternative proposal. And to me, the trip cap numbers still don't add up. Mr. Winkler said at the May meeting that he believed that multifamily housing would have one or two people. If the trip cap is lifted, as you know, those multifamily housing units could have many people living in them. Rent is very expensive here, and people need to double up and triple up in order to be able to live comfortably. And without a trip cap, we will have even more cars driving through our neighborhood. So without the chance to kind of do the numbers myself, that's my off-the-cuff response. So thank you very much for hearing my concerns.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mary. All right. Oh, you have another letter?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So this is on behalf of my neighbors, Bob and Patty Hauser, who are not able to be here today, and I will read their letter to you, if that's all right. Albany City Council and Mayor Sharon Canopa. We are not able to be here tonight, but wanted to be on the record as being opposed to the rezoning of five parcels of land from RM to MUC. We are once again appealing to all of you that hold the future of our North Albany neighborhood and quality of life in your hands. There are many reasons why this rezoning would negatively affect North Point, as well as the entire North Albany community, but here are a few key reasons we believe should be part of your consideration. First and most importantly, the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, the North Albany Refinement Plan, and Article 5 of the Development Code. The Village Center concept in each of these governing documents calls for a transition between commercial and residential. That is not satisfied if the proposed rezoning is implemented. For example, Section 5.020 of Article 5 states, "Medium-density residential development that provides a mix of housing choices is located adjacent to Village Center commercial zone." With the proposed property rezoning, commercial property would be located directly adjacent to low-density residential property in conflict with the guidance that's provided. Second, the proposed rezoning is not in keeping with the balanced development approach identified in the Comprehensive and Refinement Plans. The region affected by the proposed rezoning is bounded by Spring Hill Drive, Hickory Street, North Albany Road, and a railway along the backside. This region, as presently zoned, is approximately 50% MUC and 50% RS5 and RM combined. With the proposed zoning change, this split changes significantly, with approximately 70% of the property in the region zoned commercial, thereby upsetting the existing balanced approach. Third, once rezoned, any commercial property that meets Article 5 requirements can be built, not just a high-rise, high-density apartments that Mr. Winkler notionally proposes. This property could in fact be sold by Mr. Winkler if rezoned, and bars, nightclubs, gas stations, or small manufacturing facilities could be built with the Planning Commission approval adjacent to the property on Trune Street, with no property offset or buffer zone between the two. This is not keeping with the Village Center concept. Fourth, there are several large undeveloped commercial lots along Hickory Street that could be developed for commercial mixed-use applications. These lots have been vacant for several years, so why would it make sense to disrupt an existing residential neighborhood to increase the amount of commercial property in the area? And finally, does it make sense for well-thought-out plans for this North Albany neighborhood to be disregarded to accommodate this developer? The homeowners that purchased homes bordering these five parcels of land did so with the common understanding that there was an existing buffer between their homes and commercial property. Respectfully submitted, Bob and Patty Hauser, North Point residents. Thank you for letting me read their letter.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. So folks, I do want to remind you, as we do at most of our meetings, when it's even with different issues, as part of it's even on the agenda, rules of conduct for meetings is not to be for clapping, for pausing. And I know it's hard to not want to, because you agree with someone, but what happens is when there's somebody that might want to be testifying that's on the other side, it's kind of intimidating, and we've seen people that get up and leave because they, you know, they know they're sort of in the minority. And we want people to be able to, we're here to hear both sides, so we want, you know, we want citizens to be able to come up and feel comfortable in stating what their opinions are. So I just ask that if you just not clap, so, but thank you. Okay, next?
Your Honor, I have a question.
I don't know what you did there, Bill.
What it is we're doing tonight, because we have these original rezoning requests, and then we have an alternative that was proposed tonight, and I really appreciate the input from everybody. It's important, and we're listening. And the people that couldn't be here, Mrs. Arnold just read the letter, doesn't, isn't addressing what we're hearing tonight. So again, you asked the audience to, if they have comments, to address the proposed zoning change that we heard tonight. So again, are we, as council, considering one or both or either? In the interest of time, what are we going to consider tonight? If we're just considering the original zoning request change, and then maybe we should be deliberating on that, and if we're not, for some reason, allowed to consider the alternate request of a smaller MUC, then we shouldn't be considering that, and we ought to be letting staff do whatever it is staff's going to do to present that proposal to us.
Right. So that, so what you pretty much have is the council needing to decide whether you approve the existing proposed zone change, approve it or deny it, or if you want to be able to consider the revised version. If you do the revised version, we're going to have to have a continuance of the public hearing, because the other neighbors have not been able to be notified of what's being revised. That would be where you could, you know, staff would probably bring back findings towards that. Do you want to explain that more, Sean?
No, that's, you actually did a very good job of that, Mayor. But if we were, if the council were to consider the alternative, which I don't even know that's being proposed, so to speak, at this point, it was brought up, but I don't know if it, it's not an application. The application before us tonight is to rezone all five parcels to the MUC. If the staff wanted to consider a partial rezoning to MUC and leaving some of it as RM, then there's a couple alternatives, but we, the council wouldn't be able to make a decision on that tonight, because, number one, that's not an application, and that's a substantial change in the application, so it wouldn't be an approval with a condition, so to speak. So what we would do, we have a couple of options, and we're going to talk about it after the testimony, but I can go ahead and do that, and that is, one is to, as the mayor suggested, leave the hearing open, the public hearing open, continue the public hearing, and then we would have to get a waiver from the applicant, maybe a 60-day waiver of the 120-day requirement, to have a decision made. The other option would be to go ahead and make a decision on one of the, approval or denial of the existing application, and then while staff is preparing findings on that, if the applicant wanted to withdraw that application and come back in with the new application for the partial rezoning, then the council could consider that. But that would be up to the applicant and how they would want to handle that.
So, to follow up, my point is, if we're not, if we're not soliciting any additional testimony on the original proposal, and the mayor was clear, she asked people to focus their comments on what we heard tonight, then it seems like council ought to be deliberating on the original request of rezoning. And if it's denied, then we move on to something else.
I think one of the things the applicant might want, if the council were going to deny, and it got to the point in the evening where the council was leaning towards a denial at that point, is to get, so to speak, gauge the temperature of council on the proposed, on this alternative, because if it's something the council was, and maybe the public was in favor of, then they would maybe be more likely to go forward with that and then withdraw their, again, I don't want to speak for the applicant, I'm not sure what they would want to do, so, yeah, I mean...
I mean, I think, you know, council, we need to be able to hear, you know, what the new proposal is, the modified version, because this is what's being proposed, and that's a part of the formal public meeting process. We need to be able to hear both sides on that, so...
Counselor Coburn was, I think, was getting to, was that the letter that was read was talking about things that were not applicable to the alternative, if we were to consider the alternative, because then there would be a buffer between the residential and the commercial at that point, whereas before, maybe there wouldn't be, but with the alternative, there would be, and now maybe what he was...
Right. Dick?
It seems to me the most straightforward way to do it is to just turn this down, and they can come back and ask for a rezoning of that smaller chunk. You know, that is straightforward, and it's pretty obvious what's going on.
Well, and my next question is, is it inappropriate for me to make a motion at this time on the original request?
Right. Mayor Canopa? But we're still in the, we're still in the public hearing process.
Well, but, again, hear me out. If we're not going to, if we're not soliciting any additional testimony from the public on the original zone change request, why wouldn't we move forward? Yes, she did, because she said, please let me hear comments to what you've heard tonight, which is primarily, well, I guess there was a...
Yeah, and I think, Counselor Coburn, responding, I think, to your point here, the applicant, for a number of reasons, wasn't able to present what you saw tonight during the last hearing, so this is the first opportunity for people to actually see that and respond to it, and that's why the hearing was continued. So free their alternative, so the, the public has the, you know, should be given the opportunity to comment on the presentation they heard tonight, and I think what the mayor was suggesting was not to limit comments only to this alternative, but to limit comments to anything new that they've seen this evening that they didn't already provide comment on during the first opportunity to provide comment. So I think that regardless of the direction council goes, I think you probably should still continue to accept the testimony that anybody might have, and then you would have that opportunity to decide, do we want to consider an amendment to the application, or do we want to just consider the original proposal? And I think you can put it that way.
Sure. Fair enough.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, folks, sorry about that. We got a little bit diverted here. So next, who signed up was Nancy Demasi. Yes?
I'm Nancy Demasi. I live at 299 Benton Drive. My last name is D-E-N-A-S-I. This is a new proposal, so some of the things I had prepared have changed a little bit, but not so much, because Mr. Winkler was showing us a bunch of glossy pictures that really have nothing to do with us at all. They're not pictures of what he's proposing, they're only pictures of what might be proposed. This is a third home that I, this third new home that I've lived in. The first two homes were in another state, but in the middle of building both of those homes, the builder went bankrupt and sold off the property, and somebody else ended up finishing the homes. There is nothing that would stop this from happening. If you change this to a commercial listing, there's no telling what could come in there. Mr. Winkler can't assure us that he will not go bankrupt. He cannot assure us that he will not decide to sell off. He bought the property at a really good price, and I can understand him wanting to make money on it, but nonetheless, we are concerned about our homes. We're concerned about our neighborhoods. We're concerned about the traffic. We're concerned about the safety of our children and our grandchildren. So we would hope that you would turn down this proposal. We don't see a big change between this proposal and the original proposal, in the fact that anything could be built there once the zoning is changed. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Lee and Sue, cuts first?
I'm Lee Ketsford, 831 Ritter's Lane, Albany.
I'm Sue Ketsford, 831 Ritter's Lane, Albany. Last name's still C-U-G-S, F-O-R-T, G-A.
Sue, you might need to lower your microphone a bit, I think.
Turn it on. Turn it off. Maybe off.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I've spoke to this twice already, but my wife and I have an easement that goes, comes from our property that's just east of Mr. Winkler's development. I've walked the easement with Mr. Winkler. I've, I know that it has to be crossed twice by this proposed, now that I see the proposed road up here, has to be crossed right at the S on the RS5, and then it's crossed, just above S, it's crossed another place later on, just to the west of that. Road's been there since 1947. It's used mainly to get out for floods. It's convenient at other times to use it to. Our concern is what will happen with this new road going in? Will there be curves built for us to get through? One thing that's happened already in past behavior may be, show how future behavior will come, but I've had Mr. Winkler's partner at the time, maybe still Good Sam Hospital, met with me and asked me to give them this easement, not buy it, give it. His son said it. And when I said, no, I don't think we'll do that, they built a fence down on Hickory so I couldn't get to Hickory.
They barricaded it.
They barricaded my road, so...
So for the easement, ingress and egress means that we can come and we can go. We don't, we know we don't own the property, but the easement goes with the land, and we own 831 Northwest Ritter's Lane. And as long as we own 831 Northwest Ritter's Lane, the easement will go with 831 Northwest Ritter's Lane. It's real estate law, unless it's changed recently, and I haven't been informed by it, that ingress and egress belongs to the property of 831 Northwest Ritter's Lane. It was established in the 40s, and we have maintained it, and we have put gravel on it, we've trimmed it, we have made it passable for our cars, our tractor, our whatever foot, whatever needs to be there. We've done it and maintained it since we purchased the property in the 80s.
So our concern is, with our dealings we've already had with Mr. Winkler and his partner Good Sam, it was like, give it to us for no compensation, and if you don't do that, we will build a barricade, which they did, and not let us use a road.
And include you from yours.
So, and litigation came out of it, so I don't know why you're hearing all these flowery things, but we haven't had that good fuzzy feeling. So that's kind of...
And having the last development, as she said, when they go bankrupt, and you're left with a pile of dirt that you have to clear out to get to your property, to get in and out. When the last developer went bankrupt, Ritter's Lane was totally destroyed, and now the sign of Ritter's Lane is on my driveway, because it's, the old Ritter's Lane is not passable any longer, and there's nothing we can do, because once the former developer went bankrupt, we were just... developer went bankrupt, we were just up that Rosie Creek without that little paddle, so we were left to do it on our own, to clean it up and to make it passable again, and we did it. And we're not exactly in our sweet 16s, we're, we're just out there with a tractor and shovel and clippers, and once burned, forever burned, and we're really a little theory, and hoping that we can come to the city council and think, you know, what someone says who has the power of persuasion and is a great storyteller versus the people who sit in your city, pay their taxes and show up to go to work on their own personal property that they pay their property taxes for, that they're very happy to be here and plan to stay here generation after generation, we're going to be here, and we're hoping that you'll pay attention and listen to what we have to say, that we're going to be here long after the developer's gone and moved back to Portland and living in some wonderful house, we're still going to be at 831 Northwest Ritter's Lane. And I concur with Ms. Arnold.
Okay, right, okay, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Cutsford. Okay, next is Bill Tally.
And I wanted to mention Counselor Sykes's excuse, he had a family emergency that just came up, so it wasn't because of the hearing, it was family emergency.
First, I just wanted to acknowledge Mayor Kenopa and her work tonight, I think she's an example to all of us, and her dedication has certainly influenced my willingness to volunteer in this community, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bill, but it takes folks like you, that mostly who's out every day picking up the litter in our community, to make it that attractive community, so thank you to you, so...
I just had a couple items I wanted to bring up originally, and because of discussion tonight, some other ideas have come of mind, building upon what I believe Councilman Coburn said earlier, I don't think design at this point is really relevant, I don't know if that should really influence our decision, because those could change, so, and looking at the design that was proposed, I think it does have breed space, but I think it's also at the expense of the North Point community, because it looks like the facilities are butter up against a fence there, I don't think it'll be consistent with what exists now in the North Point area. First my, excuse me, first my items, I'd like to suggest that, you know, we've had, I think this is our third meeting, I believe, for this rezoning, not much has transpired in the other meetings, the last meeting was a disaster, I thought, and I'd like to suggest that if Mr. Winkler doesn't provide a compelling reason for his rezoning request, that a final determination be made to not consider further requests for his rezoning his property in the North Point, North Albany area. I say this because thus far, he hasn't provided any significant justification for the change, though North Point residences have presented considerable reason for concern, and it has become apparent, least to the residents, that he is wasting the city councils and North Albany residents' time, and it is suspected that his strategy is to try to wear down the community resistance with the hope that the council will then submit to his request. However, I think it would be a travesty for the city council to accommodate a person whose past behavior has shown little regard for residents and community welfare. The second item I'd like to bring up, I think it's in the best interest of the city Albany to consider a moratorium on building along Hickory, and tell it is determined how best to address concerns regarding school capacity, traffic congestion, flooding, and emergency access, in particular, traffic congestion. Traffic is really, I think, at this point is being driven by the Highway 20 situation, that there's restricted access to the town, and that backs up on 20, affects Spring Hill and Hickory, and that intersection of Hickory and Spring Hill is pretty, a pretty significant concern, and actually is a dangerous, dangerous situation, and it's not one I can see being resolved by simply putting in a light there, in fact, I think a light might make it worse. I think the only, the only option really is to improve the, the access to downtown Albany, and that's probably an expensive proposition, will take some time to do. But the growth in Albany will be driven by our traffic, and I think there is significant growth in Albany, unfortunately, I think that's maybe a reflection on our mayor's There's, childcare is proposed by Mr. Winkler, I think that'll drive traffic in our area, I mean, because you can imagine if there's childcare, people are going to want to use that, and obviously, 20, traffic on 20 will drive traffic in the Hickory, Spring Hill Drive area. I think that's, that's pretty much covered all my concerns, but I am concerned about the traffic, and I think that's something that the council should consider, and maybe putting a moratorium until we figure out how to, how to address that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, next is John Lehman.
My name is John Lehman, spelled L.A.Y.M.A.N., my address is 938 Trueness Street Northwest in Albany, my property backs up on the subject property, I'd like to say, let's see if I can, no, it's locked out, I'd like to say that, oh, that's all right, we have one proposal on, on the table, not, not one plus another one, to accommodate the, it's not a proposal, the fairy tale that was put up there for us today, we would have to subdivide one piece of property and rezone three pieces of property, and that's not a proposal yet, we don't have a traffic study, we don't have a report from the planning commission, and I don't think you can respond to that until we do. Mr. Torson's a new face, welcome to Albany.
Thank you.
If, if you get the chance, there's an absolute mountain of paper that's been submitted, all of it, as far as I know, is against this, we had a survey with 29 points about how this was a very poor proposal for our area, and 144 people signed that survey, and nobody was against, this is really a less than positive change for North Albany. I'd like to ask that you make a vote on the one proposal you have tonight, and that vote be turning down the zoning request.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Lehman. Next is Andy Lesko.
I'm Andy Lesko, last name is L.E.S.K.O., my address is 363 Benton Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, I just wanted to, I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting, so I wanted to make my comments here, though, should be brief. There's people here that are a lot more qualified and have looked into this a lot more, you've already heard some of them speak, you'll hear some more of them, and, you know, some of us maybe just don't have the capability for all the details of what is involved in municipal zoning and that kind of thing, and other things going on, and so that's kind of my place, but what I do know is that the property is zoned RM, and it was zoned that way for a reason, that we know, and sometimes we like the way things are zoned, sometimes we don't, and, but we honor the way these things are zoned, because they were done for a reason by people that probably know, hopefully know better than us. So my concern is why the property owner wants to change the zoning, they can build on the property, they can do what they want, we heard some of the reasons tonight, but we've heard from other people here, those reasons aren't binding, and so, if they want to develop under the current zone, they can do that, he's entitled to, there's no changes that are necessary. I can't possibly know his intentions, and I heard a lot of intend tonight, and I heard, I see everything changing, from the planning commission to the city council meeting to this one here, so everything's constantly changing, so I don't know what is going on, and I can't possibly have time in the day with working and family and that kind of thing to investigate all this, so I rely on the planning commission, and the planning commission heard the case, they heard the case, testimony of residents, of the property owner, and they came to the conclusion that there was no reason to change the zoning, and I felt that the response was to disparage the planning commission and their decision, and that's simply not an argument. So, I would just ask that the city council honor the planning commission's decision, and I, I think that brings up the question with this new information, that would this not have to go back to the planning commission, be reviewed again, then have them come forward with a recommendation based on a new proposal, so, again, I'm asking that the city council honor the planning commission's recommendation, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lesko. Next is Jordan Winkler.
I'm an applicant.
Okay, part of the, okay, the other part was Chris Clement, was he with the applicant too? Okay, so you're not wanting to testify?
No, he's in the...
Yeah, okay, all right. Ashlyn Walker? Does that sound right, Ashlyn? On 347 Benton, yes.
I need two little ones this time, so you can all fit and field for the list. All right, yes, I'm Ashlyn Walker, I live at 347 Benton Drive, I'm passing around a list, it's a shorter version of what's in front of me, which gives you more of a visual representation for those that are more visual of what is currently available, as well as what could be developed in the way that Mr. Winkler proposes for the area that is adjacent to the North Point neighborhood behind the already existing village center called North Albany Village. Just a reminder again, they, I put a little map in there as well, I tried to identify the areas in there specifically that are ready for development for exactly what Mr. Winkler proposes to put in the residential area adjacent to the current neighborhood. It's not perfect, I apologize if it doesn't exactly match, I'm not a planning person, but I just want you to realize that, you know, there's a significant amount of, of property along that road that can be developed just as he wants, and it doesn't have to affect the current residents. I think everybody else hit the nail on the head, they talked about you have to examine the worst-case scenario, the best-case scenario is what he's proposing, it's a great proposal, but we are not locked into it, even if he builds it, what's the next person going to do? So that has to be your ultimate concern, is examining the worst-case scenario of what may come from a zone change. My last part is a little bit of a question, I heard the proposal tonight talking about going from like 20 units per acre to 30, my understanding previously, and I don't know if this goes all the way back to the planning commission or not, is that the residential, the RM zoning was only 10 units per acre, and then it was going to unlimited, not from 20 to 30, so I don't know if somebody can, if I'm thinking of two different things, or if somebody would like to educate me on that.
Staff will do that when they come up to clarify, after the testimony.
That would be great, because that we were, that was one of the big concerns with going to the high-density part, was I thought that we were going from a maximum of 10 units per acre, which is very reasonable for that property tucked behind the commercial area next to the resident, the current residential area, one of the big contentions is not only the availability of the commercial units, but the change in density going to unlimited, so just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as that goes. Any questions?
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Walker. Next is Ruth Hope. Ruth?
I think I need to down, can you hear me? Most of what I had planned to talk, discuss, has been blown by Mr. Winkler's new presentation. I was very pleased with the planning commission denial of Mr. Winkler's zone change request, and I didn't find his excuse for not being prepared for his hearing on his appeal on the 24th of May. In fact, I was surprised the city bought it. The planning commission, and criteria, and the revitalization and comprehensive plans are guides for you to make judgments, they are not absolute, they can be amended at any time. At the time of this writing, 10 of those years that were given to one, I'll go back on that, one of those plans said that they would be followed for 20 years, and 10 of those years have expired, and a lot of changes have taken place in those 10 years. Some of this is all stuff I would, can't address any further. Trees were brought up, I can go back to what started out as Glen Ray, then Legend Homes, and finally, Aiden Homes Development. The city has stopped 10 trees. They also approved 66 lots on 10 buildable acres. Well, it was a big problem cramming all those lots into the 10 acres with 10 trees, and little by little, the city finds reasons for getting rid of it. There's only one tree left, and it's a great big, beautiful redwood, so I don't go along with the tree thing. I don't know if he's still planning to funnel traffic through Aiden Homes, Cutsford's property, and North Benton Drive to get to Spring Hill, and I'm very much opposed to any more traffic I contacted several people in regards to his excuse for not being prepared, there was a fire in the area, and there was no electricity, and they couldn't access the architect's thing. Well, three of the people that I, individuals that I contacted, either laughed or smirked and said, oh, the dog eats the homework. So anyway, that's kind of how I viewed his excuse, because everybody seemed to think that their material should have been stored someplace, there are many places can be stored, often never, never really under the clouds. Anyway, I didn't buy that, and I still don't buy it, and I, again, hope that you will consider and agree with the planning department's denial. Thank you, and I do appreciate every one of you that give huge amounts of time and patience, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, so much, thank you.
I had all this stuff, and I was going to have you review that has transpired in the Hickory neighborhood over the years.
Okay.
I decided that was wrong.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that is it that we had signed up, was there anyone else that had any new information? So, yes, Rick?
Thank you, Mayor, my name is Eric Skinner, I go by Rick. I live at 854 Northwest North Point Drive in Albany, last name spelled S.K.I.N.N.E.R. and I have, I'll make mine quick, it was two pieces of data that seemed new to me. One was, and we called a trip count number that we talked about last time, was 192, Mr. Winkler stated 392, so I don't know if that was just an error in the statement, or if that's a new number, but that seems different. So that's, that's... So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I don't know if this picture can be shown again, these lots, okay? If that can be put back up there again so everybody can see it?
Hit Enter on the PC there.
Okay.
Yeah, hit Enter. Yeah, Enter.
There's Hit Enter?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And if you could pull up this picture. Sure. There it is. Okay, so it's this, I don't know if the, right there, I guess we can't, yeah, right where the cursor is. What's different from what we saw tonight is the RS5 piece right here. That wasn't on this picture before. Where did that come from? And when was that acquired? So that has to do with the continuation of Trune into the North Point neighborhood and down into Hickory. To me, that's a major discrepancy as to what we saw before on this picture, okay? That piece right here is not on here, and it's on this picture now. So that's all I have to add as far as differences.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's William Walton. I live at 997 North Point. I'm new to the residents, I just moved there last week.
Could you spell your last name, please?
W E L T O N.
Okay.
Congratulations on your earlier recognition.
Oh, thank you.
And I also want to say, yeah, I'm new to the residents and I'm pretty, I'm proud to see everyone behind me come here. I got a little bit of the word of this just moving in from the neighbor, so I'm not too familiar with everything. But what I've heard so far tonight seems to me that the applicant applied, it was denied, he appealed. He couldn't appeal because he didn't have his stuff, and that's why we're here tonight. When he came up here tonight, he put the proposal out there. Seems to me that it should be based on the appeal, should uphold the previous decision. They're there for a reason. And then his appeal, or his new proposal, should go back to the gamut again. If it wears him out, then it wears him out. Clearly, he's not gonna wear us out. We're gonna keep coming here, and we're gonna keep putting up our opposition, because we don't think it's right. It was zoned for a particular reason, and it should stay that way. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Okay, is anyone else? Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. Is the, would the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
I just would like to clarify and answer Ray's question. I think it is 192 PM peak trips.
Okay.
And I said 392 because I was confused for a second. The RS5 has been owned ever since we bought it. It is a two-acre buffer that is not subject to this. Mr. Cutzver's express easement is at the perimeter of the RS5 and does not affect the multifamily. And I think people were concerned, some of the testimony referred to the trip cap, and I think is genuinely confused about the trip cap and what it means. And that's why I suggested the alternative, which is less confusing. And the compromise was simply because I think it is in the best interest of the community for this type of progressive project to be built. I think it serves the residents and addresses a much-needed need for workforce housing and for senior housing. I'm confident that the trip cap really wasn't understood, but in general, when I hear that childcare drives traffic, I don't necessarily disagree, I do think we need childcare. I don't think this is a fairy tale. We've built many substantial projects. We have a long history and a completed project list that is somewhat impressive, including Global Awards for Excellence. And so I think we're confident we can deliver this. The staff, as you may recall, the staff report was positive about the proposal. The planning commission was negative, that's why people appeal. It was not a fabrication that there was a major fire in Portland that destroyed access to the server. Michael could attest to the fact that his firm was shut down for several days, four days?
Four full days, in which no one was able to work.
And we did, of course, attempt, when we couldn't retrieve the data, to cancel or postpone that last meeting. So we're here today, I suggested an alternative for your consideration, and if you can't address today, I'd certainly like to understand what your view of it is. So to summarize what I'd like, I'd either like an up or down on the original proposal, which contained a trip cap, to assuage some of the concerns of people that I would flip this, and there would be a mega project. Because with a trip cap, it is limited. Now, I don't want to get technical, but I believe the number of PM trips represented by a single senior household is roughly .25. One quarter of one trip per PM peak period from a senior household. So that would represent something on the order of 50 trips. And the family is, of course, more than twice that. We have proposed a development that is at a lower density than what we would be entitled to now, if you deny the request for an appeal. This is not an attempt to build 1,200 units, as Mrs. Arnold has written. So that's really all I've got to say. I would appreciate some consideration of the compromise we proposed. I think the project itself is a conceptual sketch. We didn't develop the entire project because it isn't consistent with the zone. And as much as I like Michael, I'm not going to give him a half a million dollars to do something that isn't consistent with the zone. So that's really about all I got.
Likewise. There was a short comment in relationship, I think just confusion of relationship to how many units could be built in relationship. And basically, the zone RM itself will allow 25 units per acre. That's the base. And then you can get up to 30 with city-accepted, what do you call those?
Bonuses.
Bonuses, depending on who you choose. So that's where you can max it out to that level. There was a misconception I heard that someone thought it was 010, and I just wanted to clarify that. Anyone from planning would be the same. Thank you.
Mr. Van Goot, speak. Could he identify himself?
Michael Roberts, LRS architect.
Yeah.
From, is that the rest of us?
Portland, Oregon. Do you need my address?
No longs, Portland, I think we have it on record.
Yeah, I think I've added.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you. So staff, did you have any response to any of the testimony that you'd like to clarify? And if you do want to clarify for sure on that density?
Yes, that's exactly it. So under the present zone of RM, Mr. Winkler is correct, or Mr. Roberts is correct, it is 25 units per acre is the maximum density. There are some density bonuses that deal with affordable housing or solar access, relationship to transportation, which could provide for up to conceivably 30 units per acre in the existing RM zone. If the zone was mixed-use commercial, the only standard there is that mixed-use commercial requires a minimum of 10 units per acre that does not have an upper maximum density in the mixed-use commercial zone. The trip cap of 192 is correct, that's what was in the record in the trip cap analysis.
I think I would just add to what David said, that while there's not a standard in the MUC for what the density limit is in terms of units per acre, there are a number of other limitations that would constrain that, such as parking requirements, open space and landscaping requirements, and the building height, which is 50 feet in that zone. So it's, one should not assume that it's just an unlimited number of units that could be built in the MUC zone, it's just that there's not a unit-per-acre density standard. But there are, the other constraints would come into play to limit what that could be. And then again, yeah, in this particular instance, the trip cap would limit that further, so that the intensity of uses in terms of traffic would be approximately equal to the same intensity in terms of traffic as the current RM zone.
So the trip cap you mentioned was 192 was for the peak hour, is that correct? Not the overall 24-hour day?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And you can ask, we can ask questions of, you ask questions of us during deliberations, but if you have questions now, clarification questions, say about the trip cap, you're welcome to ask those now, and we could, Ron can probably help answer them if anybody has any questions like that.
I do have a.
Do you have, Rich?
What's the distance between the proposed commercial area and the existing commercial area?
But.
But, right.
Right.
So you're talking about 150 feet between the center of the building to the current commercial area?
Can we put it inside?
Sure.
Mr. Winkler, could you come to the podium, too? Thank you.
Are you asking from like?
Center of that building?
Right here?
Yeah, to the edge of the, of the current commercial area.
Comes over to there, then, right?
Yeah.
It's probably over 290 feet.
Or to the south.
Or to the south, you know, all the way down.
Well, to the hospital.
The hospital, that's 428.
It's gonna be about 120.
120, yeah. With the parking lot, there's the buffer, about that, 120, 125.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Council have any more questions of staff before we close the public hearing? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing at 8:58 PM. And staff have any thing they'd like to state, or council, what would you like to do?
And I'll just say, as you get into deliberations, it will be really helpful to, as much as possible, make any findings you have or comments and direct them back to the review criteria. Particularly, as staff will come back in the future to provide formal findings and conclusions, we'll be able to, maybe be able, better to support whatever your final decision is and represent your findings based on the review criteria that way, so.
Questions? Dick?
Yeah, seems how there's a new proposal on the table, seems to be. I'd like to move that the city council deny the proposed zone change application, ZC-02-16, subject to the adoption of revised findings and conclusions based on testimony and evidence presented at the public hearing.
I would second that.
Okay, all right. Discussion on the motion. Ray?
Do we have, we had some new findings, I guess, based on what was presented to us, but do we have any conclusions?
Well, I made the motion, if you want to talk about it. They're talking about changing.
Yeah, and this kind of goes back to what I was saying, if you, if you would like to deny it, be very helpful for you to articulate the reasons why you're denying it. If there is, if there was testimony from the public that you found particularly compelling, to reiterate that, and say you were convinced or persuaded by certain testimony that it didn't meet the criteria, that's helpful information.
So you want me to say why I made that motion, is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, for one, I think we have an excellent planning commission, and I think they considered this at length, and I think they had good reasons for turning it down as part of this. Another reason in my mind is that we like at most anything that we consider in Page 3, for instance. And we relate this to our strategic planning theme, and it has to do with great neighborhoods. So here we have neighbors that are concerned about their neighborhood, they're saying that if we do this zone change, it's gonna degrade their neighborhood. So I conclude from that, that making this zone change will degrade the neighborhood, and it goes against part of our strategic plan theme. Beyond that, I could comment that the mock zone, as the neighbors have suggested, allows a wide variety of uses. And if we adopt that mock zone for the whole area, and the, if the, Mr. Winkler decides to sell the property, it could be wide open for any of those uses. So I will again say that I propose that, and I will add, that we reject this zone change.
Okay. I think Rich wanted to comment and then Bill.
Actually, Ray's ahead of me.
Actually, the, my, my comment goes to parts of what Dick was talking about. When you have, we're not dealing with whether or not we're going to build this building or that building, we're dealing with whether or not we are okaying a certain style of building to be put there, a certain kind of business, if you will. And with a, with a positive vote on this, we would then be allowing the owner of the property to put anything there. There is nothing that says that, in my understanding, that we can't put any codicils on it that says you can't do it. It is, once we say yes, it's yes. And they can do about anything they want to at that point that fits within that zone. The reason I ask for what's the distance between the center of that building and what is now commercial, being I heard testimony in the past that said, this would be very handy for the seniors who live there. Well, a couple hundred feet one way, 300 feet another way, and they're in what is a commercial area. That has a lot of potential and has empty spaces on a regular basis for whatever they may need, and being part of Samaritan to One Direction may well have, if there is, because there are other retirement homes not very far away, they may put geriatric kind of services in, in their location. So for those reasons, that's why I am dissuaded to give a positive vote.
Yeah.
Bob, to address your request. My concern deals with the transportation. I don't like the trip cap. When we had this first public hearing a month ago, six weeks ago, two months, I don't remember when, but it was brought up then, that it would be tough to enforce, and even tougher in the future if the property were sold to another investor, assuming that Mr. Winkler built the apartments and so forth, and did comply with the cap, then, you know, you can sell that facility. I just think it's problematic from a transportation standpoint.
Okay, Ray?
Well, I'll take the opposite tack, because we've got two issues here, and that is, we're voting on what the original criteria, the original proposal was to us, and then we've got the ancillary potential ideas coming down the road. On the very first one, because of the presentations that were made last time, and even strongly reinforced with our sheet of paper here, right down the line, I have to say that I agree with the staff recommendation originally. And to counter Bill's point on the trip caps, I thought that was a very elegant and very, very easily enforceable solution to the problem. I still do, even on a revised proposal. I still do, even on a revised proposal, possibly having it in some mitigated, modified form. So, I have no qualms about, I'm going to vote against the proposal, the denial, I will vote against the denial. And I do definitely, I am seriously concerned, it's one of those be careful what you wish for, because as Mr. Winkler even, even mentioned, the ramifications of just coming in with what was already currently allowed is dramatically massive apartment complexes that I don't think anybody is looking at that elephant and saying, I would rather have that than a planned development with all the buffer zones that are, with the green areas and everything else. I mean, it could be seriously different, as people have alluded to. I would rather take my chances on something akin to what we saw as a proposal. So, I'm going to vote to no on the motion as it stands right now.
Let's see then, Dick?
Yeah, I agree with Ray. I mean, I do like the, what's been presented, and I do, I've always liked the village, village concept, village center concept, and I, I just think that's what staff has looked into this very, I mean, I'm sure, very thoroughly, and they're recommending, you know, that it's an okay thing, because actually, you can likely says, you can build anything you want anyway, and it could be worse. But I, I, I'm going to vote against it, against the, yeah, because I think that it would just take up more time and you'll need to do it.
Dick, you have, Dick?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to comment on, we have all these criteria in the, in the staff that have worked diligently to build up this gigantic argument as to why the criteria should be followed. But to my way of thinking, this criteria lacks a real important, maybe, criteria number six, and that is, what the hell happens to the existing neighborhood? And if, if we were starting with a completely blank sheet of paper, and there hadn't been any housing built in that R5 zone, I might feel differently. But those people came, and they did their due diligence, they, they looked at the zoning, well, first of all, they looked at the woods behind their house and, oh man, what a neat place to live. And then I'm sure they came down and someplace, found out what the zoning was, well, medium density housing, that's not too bad. But then they find out that a person is asking for mixed-use commercial, and here are all the uses for mixed-use commercial. You want to have that in your backyard? Now, I've been on the council often on since the seventies, and has mostly been agitating, in some cases, fighting to keep my neighborhood a livable place. I live downtown, you think somebody knows where I live, and I have real sensitivity that if somebody coming in and plopping down something un, inappropriate to the neighborhood. So, so again, I say, I think we definitely should say no to this zone.
Okay, all right, council.
Just a question for city attorney and possibly staff. Do we have to make a finalized decision tonight, or can staff get the feel of trying to come back to us with some of the ideas and just table this or continue it till later?
I, I think, and again, I'll let the applicant speak to this for himself, I think the applicant would, and, and the, the audience tonight would like to have a decision, a yes or a no decision on the existing application as it is now, and that way, so there's two, and then there's two things that, or multiple things, but two things that I would say that the applicant could do at that point, and one would be to come back in with the new proposal, and they've expressed an interest in getting the council's opinion on that prior to the end of this meeting tonight. Or the other thing they can do, and I was, and Bob has touched on this a little bit, is their next recourse is to appeal this to the land use board of appeals. At that point, the city has to defend that, that Luba appeal, and we need, that's why Bob was asking that we go off this criteria on this yellow sheet, because our defense of, of the denial is going to be, did this, was this criteria not met? And, and that's the evidence presented from, from the testimony of the public as well as the applicant, and so when we base a decision of denial, it, it would help the, the city to have the, the reasoning be meeting this criteria here, because that's, that's what they're going to look at, whether or not, and, and it says here, zoning map amendments will be approved if, it's just, it could just as easy to say, will not be approved if they find that these things are not met. So, if, if it's a denial, it would be good to say that, well, this isn't met, and, and Council Coburn said he didn't believe that the transportation, you know, component was met. That's helpful for, for me as the attorney defending the appeal, and, and that would help if, if people are voting no, they could say, well, this is why. It doesn't meet one or four or whatever it is, so, but anyway, yeah. I don't know if I answered, I think I answered your, your question in the very beginning, and then I went off on a little bit of a thing there, but...
I think we do have a motion on the table, and I'm seeing, though, that we might not have action on this tonight. I don't know, we've got four votes here for tonight. So, we have a, we have kind of a unique charter compared to many cities in the state, so our charters, any action, you have to have four votes for any sort of action. Well, the only time, as you can see, we have one counselor that had family emergency, so we only have five counselors here. So, I am seeing we've got two no votes here, which would be a three-two, so the fourth vote would have to come from me, but I don't get to vote unless it's a tie vote. That's what's unique about our charter. So, it kind of, kind of hamstrings us at times on getting decisions made in a certain meeting. We have to always have a full council in order to be, if it's going to end up being a divided council on that.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Bob. If, can the applicant, if we would approve the, the mixed use, can they go ahead and do the adjustments that they suggested tonight anyway?
The adjustments in terms of where they would apply the zone?
Yeah, I mean, say we go ahead, say we would say, yes, we want to change the zoning, okay? Then they could go ahead and do what they want anyway without them making their adjustments to only zone so much, right?
The, so, their, their proposal is to, to zone, you know, those five lots?
Right.
Right? And so, if that were to be approved, then that would be the decision, and you would be telling, you know, city staff to say, go change that, that is now on our maps, that's a new zone, and the, the applicant at that point wouldn't be able to change that or do, they wouldn't be able to reduce that, that area that was just rezoned. So, I, I don't know if that was your question, but, but maybe the second part of that is, if, if you, if you didn't rezone it, if, if you didn't, if you denied their proposal, then they could, they could build to whatever the current zone would allow. They could apply tomorrow for something that would be consistent with the current zone, the RM zone.
Or they could appeal to Luba.
Or they could appeal your, whichever decision, yeah, they could appeal a denial to, to Luba. The other, the other alternative that they, they might have would be to, if you make a tentative decision tonight to give staff time to provide formal findings and conclusions for you to consider, in this period between tonight and September 13th, when we would probably schedule the final decision, the applicant might choose to withdraw their application. They might choose to, to withdraw and, and come back with a different proposal. That would be their decision.
Your Honor, I call for the question. We've got a motion on the floor, let's vote on it.
Okay, everyone ready? All right, and the motion is for to deny the zone change application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye, yes.
Sykes is not here. Johnson?
No.
Kellum?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
No.
Coburn?
Yes.
It's three to two.
Okay, so what happens when we have that as a three-two, then? What we do is it's held over for the next council meeting, so it'll be in two weeks, and then we'll need to have another vote on it as long as we have a full council here. And so, whichever way the missing counselor, Counselor Sykes votes, it could be a fourth vote for denial, or it could be a split vote from there. So, from right now, we have no action on this item, it will be held over in two weeks, for, in two weeks.
Point, the point that won't be a public hearing at that point.
And it won't be a public hearing, that will just be bringing this question back to the council for a decision.
Madam Mayor, I will not be here for the September 13th meeting.
For September 13th, but what about, will counselors be here in two weeks? August 23rd is the next one. What is it, August 23rd?
23rd.
Yeah, yeah, Ray?
I'd still like to hear from the developer as to what his steps might be at this point.
Right, no, we can't, the public hearing's been closed and all of that, so we've got...
There's a business from the public, though.
Right, from, for when it, when it comes to the next council meeting, it will, this item will have to be first before any business from the public. We have closed a public hearing, so we cannot have any more testimony. And also, if the neighborhoods and, you know, the neighbors can all refrain from contacting counselors, because we are right in the legalities of our land use laws right now, and as the public hearing's been closed, we are not to be able to receive any more information since we are right into the decision-making. Peace.
Mayor, I just have one question, maybe this is for you or for Sean, but the, the applicant did express an interest in, in hearing preliminary thoughts on, you know, that alternative proposal that, that they presented. I don't know if, if, if it's appropriate for the council tonight or during the next meeting to respond to that, I don't know if that gets, I, this is a question because the applicant mentioned that, so I just wanted to raise that.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we're going to have to do, since we've had the motion made, is when it comes back in the two weeks, and then once we have a decision, then the council will decide then what to do on his proposal for that. Okay, council comfortable with that?
Okay, no, but that's what it is.
Yeah, I mean, bring the business from the council tonight, if you want to express opinions on it, good. I mean, not, it's not a hearing, it's not, anybody can comment on it except the council, but if they want to bring it up and say, well, I thought that was a bad idea, a good idea.
Right, anything else, Bob?
Your Honor, can we take a short break?
Um, yes, we can, so, okay. With that, we are going to take a recess. Okay, thank you, folks. The light's not on.
He's not quite ready.
He was just looking at me.
There it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, light's on, all right. This will be a public hearing, and it's for an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of fifteen acres of surplus property to the Greater Albany Public Schools located near Timber Ridge School Northeast and Somerset Drive Northeast. At this time, I will open, this is on page 245, at this time, I'll open the public hearing at 9:29 PM. And is there a staff report?
There is, thank you, Mayor. Wow, that's loud. I'm not yelling at you, Bill. So as the mayor said, this hearing is to consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with GAPS. The IGA is provided for you on pages 245 through 255 of your council packet. The primary purpose of this IGA is to define terms for property exchanges and construction of public infrastructure to support construction of a new school east of I-5. The IGA in your packet is consistent with the direction that staff has previously received from the council and also the school board. So there are no surprises for you in that IGA in your packet tonight. It's, everything that's in there is what we've presented to you previously, discussed previously. State statute defines several actions that must take place prior to selling public property, one of which is holding a public hearing, which we're doing now, providing an opportunity for people to speak either for or against the proposed sale. So I'm gonna provide a quick description of what this IGA accomplishes, and then I'm also gonna highlight a couple items for you that you've heard in the past, either multiple times, or in some cases, quite a while ago in the past, because I'm trying to check the boxes on what's required in the state statute. So in the, in the big picture, the IGA will keep the city on track for reimbursement of the economic development funds that were originally used to construct public infrastructure out in this area. It's, it will facilitate construction of the new elementary school east of I-5, as I said. It'll also facilitate construction of critical public infrastructure that's necessary not only to serve that school site, but also the Greater Albany area. In addition, it secures or sets the stage for area to be used as a new park east of I-5 in conjunction with this new school site, provides an opportunity for Parks Department and the school district to work together to identify efficiencies in their site plans where they can share in investments of mutually beneficial infrastructure. And then the last thing that it does is it secures property for two parks that the city currently leases from GAPS. So in all, the IGA incorporates three land sales, but only one of those is where the city is selling land to GAPS. And that property that's being sold to GAPS is part of what we refer to as the Brandis property, and it's shown on Attachment 1 of the IGA, which is provided on page 251 of your packet. Now, this area that's shown on the attachment is approximately seventeen acres, twelve of which is assumed to be developable following wetland mitigation. The IGA provides for sale of approximately ten of those twelve acres, of the developable acres, and the five undevelopable acres. So it envisions about fifteen acres of land being sold to GAPS for $375,000. Now, that $375,000 would be paid to the city through a $255,000 cash contribution and transfer of ownership of Sunrise Park, which has an estimated value of $120,000. As you'll recall, that remaining two developable acres in that area that's highlighted on Attachment 1 is planned to be purchased by the Parks Department at a later date, and those funds would similarly be used to reimburse the original economic development investments out there. An appraisal of this land identified that prior to wetland mitigation, the land that's anticipated to be developable would be valued at around $37,500 per acre, and that the undevelopable acreage was assigned no value. So the price was determined by taking the ten developable acres planned for sale to the school, times the price per acre of $37,500 to generate the dollar amount of $375,000. I've checked all my statute boxes, given you the highlights. If you have, there's a lot of other details in the IGA itself. If you have questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them, but at this point, staff is recommending that council authorize the city manager to execute the IGA that's provided in your packet. In our opinion, it facilitates multiple positive outcomes for the community, and we just hope we're able to see it move forward at this point. Thank you.
All right. Questions?
So move.
Just a sec, we've got a public hearing open, so...
It's a public hearing, that's right.
Is there anyone here that wanted to testify or comment on this public hearing? Don't see anyone, so with that, then I will close the public hearing at 9:33 PM. And now, council, what would you like to do?
Move to have staff develop the IGA, or sign off on the IGA as written.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is business from the public. Anyone here that would like to bring an item forward this evening? Because I think almost everyone left, so. Okay, Lisa, you've got the Last River Rhythms going tomorrow, so...
And the movie on Friday night.
Yep, yes.
A while.
Busy summer. Okay, next, council, you have an adoption of a resolution. This is on page 257, and this is for accepting and appropriating $1.3, $1,300,800 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And I see our fire chief coming forward, and congratulations on getting this, you know, SAFER grant.
Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. Six months ago, I came before you and requested permission to apply for a SAFER grant or a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response grant. And on Friday, we received notification that we were selected to receive the funds, which we're elated to hear. These funds would allow us to hire six new firefighter positions in the department, which would help us deal with the ever-increasing call volume that we've been experiencing since about 2010. And they would also assist us with meeting NFPA and OSHA standards, which we currently struggle to meet as an organization. The funds to pay for our match, because this is a matching grant, and actually, let me back up just a little bit. If you remember, those of you that are on the council, in 2011, I believe it was, we received a SAFER grant at that time as well, and we hired six firefighters. And that grant was a little bit different in context than this grant. That grant was a two-year grant, and we were in the middle of recession, so the federal government, FEMA, paid for 100% of the six employees' wages and benefits during that two-year period of time, and there was no match from the city. This time, there is a required match, and the period of performance has gone from two years to three years. So it's a three-year grant. Year one and year two is a 75% federal share, 25% city share, or city match, and then year three is a 35% federal share, and then a 65% match from the city. Obviously, what they're trying to do now, as we've come, or coming out of recession, is trying to get departments to continue the jobs or the positions once the grant period is over, and it would be our desire, obviously, as well, to continue the positions if at all possible. And I would intend to start for my budget over the next three years so that we were able to do that. But the monies for the first year have already been included, or were already included, in my budget for this coming year. If you remember from my budget presentation here a few months ago, we intended on hiring three firefighters. In the back of my mind, I knew that we'd applied for the grant, and so my hope was to get six firefighters and to use the funding for the three firefighters as then the match money, the city's match portion. So I intend to do that in the first year, and then continue that in the subsequent With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may even have about this grant process.
Yeah, Bessie?
Chief, I'm just curious, you know, you're gonna have to budget it after this grant goes away. Is it realistic that we can keep the ones you hire?
I'm hopeful, and I am hopeful for a few different reasons. One is that the last two years, we've seen growth in the fire department's budget and probably city budgets, generally speaking, just as the economy has improved. And then the other aspect of it that goes along with that is that our increasing call volume has created a significant increase in revenue from the ambulance side. We're going on way more ambulance calls than we went on seven years ago. That then generates additional revenue, which ultimately helps the city out and brings more in. In fact, in last year's budget, we, the city, not we, the department, but we, the city, had anticipated that we would realize $2.3 million in ambulance revenue, and it actually exceeded $2.8 million. So it was a little more than half a million dollars over what we had anticipated as a city that we would receive. So we're continuing to see that, our call volume, it was interesting, the budget message that I gave a few months ago, I, at that point in time, based on the call volume where we're at, projected this year we would do, I just looked at this number today, projected that we would do 9,169 calls this year. I updated that number just the other day. Based on actual numbers, we're now right at 9,400 calls that were on pace for this calendar year.
And I swear, they all happened this last week. I mean, I've never seen so many go by our house. It's just amazing.
You just look at the PulsePoint app.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Thirty calls in a day is not unusual.
It's just amazing, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I remember, this is kind of the same questions and concerns that we had when we had the last SAFER grant, so that what really worked out well, I mean, it really helped to be able to fill that gap by being able to have the additional staffing, but then over time, there ended up being, losing some staff to other cities that pay higher, and also retirements. So this is really sort of kind of getting us back up on that top of that curve again, so...
Definitely, yeah.
I'm really pleased that we were able to get this grant. It's really needed. I think you were, you and me had a discussion about one of our local cities that were been kind of serving a lot lately. Did they get the SAFER grant, too? Do you know, they received one?
Lebanon?
Yeah.
They have not yet. They're still in the running, they have not gotten a denial. They applied for six firefighter positions as well. They have not heard anything. One of the things I will say about this grant for us, the way that the grant process works, every Friday, they do a new round. And so in round one, we did have a local department that did get it, which of all the departments in the nation, for a Lynn County department, which was Sweet Home, to get it in the first round, that's saying something. They wrote a very good grant, and their need is high. We received it in the fourth round, which, how many rounds, I'll bet there'll probably be twenty rounds or so. So we got it toward the front end, and there's a lot more rounds to go that our neighboring department, Lebanon, could still get it, and we're cheering tomorrow, hopefully they'll receive these.
I hope. I've been amazed by, you know, watching that PulsePoint, and with Honor Own City, how many times we're having to, you know, send medic calls over to Lebanon, even in the city. It's like, we're pretty much really serving the whole region, and, you know, it's quite frequently anymore, you know, several times a week, and which really, you know, short changes us if we have really more emergencies. So I hope they're able to kind of pick up on and get some more staffing, because they have a whole district.
Right.
There's just the city of Lebanon, it's Lebanon District, so...
And they have hired more people. The collaborative single-role medic unit program that we've done with them in tangent, Medic 71, actually, next week, they'll have, they'll be bringing Medic 72 on. So there'll be a second single-role unit that will service both of our jurisdictions, which will really help out. It'll keep our units more here in quarters, because that unit will be available to go on calls over there.
Yeah, good. Yep, nope, this is great, so. Okay, council, what would you like to do with this resolution?
Move to approve the SAFER application.
Second.
Great.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, chiefs. Okay, on the back of the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, and next, award of bids, so Jeff?
Stasis has been waiting patiently.
Okay. No, that was hard as it gets, I can't want to... Yeah. It did look confusing, a little bit, I was...
Good evening, mayor and councillors. This first award is for SS 1703A. It's the 2017 Pipe Bursting Project. We opened bids and received three bids for the project. Staff is recommending that council award the contract to K&L Plumbing, a contract in the amount of $756,200. We did receive three bids, ranging from the low bid amount up to $874,000. This project will rehabilitate approximately 4,400 linear feet of sewer and stormlines. The attachments that the city maps show the locations of the pipes that are gonna be rehabilitated. The projects are funded from street capital and sewer capital. Are there any questions?
Questions? Yeah, Bill?
Page 282, so Attachment 4, on Vine Street, there's a black line, top and bottom of the page. Is that a project or not?
That's the canal.
Oh, okay.
If it was in color, it would be obvious.
It was probably blue.
Yeah.
All right, it looked like a big project. And I'm sure there's a process you go through to identify the biggest needs. I just found it interesting that these are scattered all around, which, on one hand, it's nice to get these things fixed, but you gotta think it increases the cost to the contractor to have to mobilize to all these places.
Yeah, we do, we rank all of our sewer pipes using the NASCO, I apologize, but I cannot remember what that acronym means, but it's a nationally recognized... I apologize, but I cannot remember what that acronym means, but it's a nationally-recognized method to rank sewer lines. And so, we identify the top twenty worst sewer lines in the city of Albany. We look at those lines, we look at videos, just to make sure that we do in fact want to rehabilitate them and verify that the methods that we're looking at are going to work for the pipe. So, that's how they're identified.
But Bill, to, man, it's loud tonight. To answer your question a little more, one of the exercises that operations staff goes through in identifying priority projects is they look at a segment of pipe that ranks really high and then they look around it as well to see if there are neighboring segments that are maybe not worst of the worst but getting close and see if it makes more sense to stay in that localized area. And so, we do see, just depending on what the situation is in each given year's evaluation, where we might have more in a centralized location, just so happens this year, the worst of the worst that needs to be addressed is apparently a little more dispersed. But that line of thinking as far as trying to not mobilize all over the city unnecessarily is part of the decision-making process and some of that Chris's staff does annually.
What's the projected length of, for the construction project in terms of time?
So, we bid this project with a bigger construction window, just because we're bidding so late in the season, because we wanted to encourage contractors to bid that already had work on their plate. And so, the construction window.
Is there like a completion date for next spring or something?
Yeah, I thought I had that on here.
Because it does seem like quite a bit of work.
It is, it is quite a bit of work. I think that we put the ultimate completion date in spring two thousand eighteen, but then the, we have individual completion dates, like once the contractor starts working at a site, they can't skip around. They have to get the work done.
Yeah, we had June two thousand eighteen as a completion date.
Okay. I know that over the years, we've made serious, major improvements on fixing pipes and water leakage, et cetera, et cetera. How are we doing on the sewer? Is this something like painting a bridge, what you never get done with it, you start and start all over again?
Yeah, if I don't answer your question fully, please stop me, because I was reading my completion date information there. So, I would say just even anecdotally, what we've seen since we've taken this holistic approach, if you will, of addressing the sewer system, five years ago, we were routinely getting emergency repair calls, sinkholes, manhole failures, significant ones. And where I feel like we were kind of on the cusp of losing control, we've made a pretty systematic, we've taken a pretty systematic approach to increasing our funding and being able to get more work done annually through some tough decisions and rate increases over the last five, six years. And we don't see those types of calls anymore. And we've seen the total amount of bad pipe in the system decline, but there's always new pipe moving on. It's a never-ending process.
Yeah.
But we're, I feel like we're right where we should be.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right, counsel, what would you like to do with this bid?
Fix the pipes.
Fix the pipes, okay.
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Okay, any more discussion? All, yeah.
I move, Bill, second.
Right, yeah. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is the cured-in-place pipe projects.
So, staff is recommending council award a contract in the amount of eight hundred three thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars to B&amp;L Water Solutions of Littleton, Colorado. We received two bids for this project, ranging from the low bid up to eight hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirteen. The project's going to rehabilitate approximately sixty-two hundred feet of sewer and storm drain pipe. Again, the project locations are shown in the attachments in the council packet and staff is recommending that council award this contract.
Have we ever used the Colorado firm before?
No, we haven't, but we did call references. So, we spoke to three municipalities that this company has worked for and they received excellent reviews.
Thank you.
Have we used this process before?
We have, yes. Cured-in-place pipe is a trenchless technology that we've used quite a bit. There's not as many contractors that use this trenchless construction method, but we've used it in a lot of our collection rehabilitation projects.
When we look at a pipe that needs to be fixed or replaced, we do an evaluation to try to use a trenchless technology first, specifically cured-in-place pipe. It's the, provides an adequate product and it's the least expensive for us. Next test is if we can't do, use cured, it's not appropriate for cured-in-place pipe, can we do pipe bursting? And then, if it doesn't pass that test, then we're looking at an open trench replacement, which is typically the most costly. So, we're evaluating our pipes and then we're evaluating the method in which we repair them and try to make good investments.
So, is this some kind of a plastic we use or is it some Portland cement kind of thing?
It's actually, it's like a thick white fabric that they pull through the pipe and then they cure the fabric by injecting resin in it. It's an interesting project. If you ever out and about, it's kind of fun to watch.
Yeah.
So.
High-tech.
So, Stacy, I thought when we did the CIP this year, that we were going to be starting on Hill Street this year, later this year.
We are.
Was that for that project?
We've, so you notice in here, we have some pipelines being replaced on Hill Street in anticipation of the street project. So, we've, we did move that forward. According to our last discussion with you, we've actually received the survey, the base sheets already from Candy Engineering. Chris Serkelski's already working on the design. Our goal is to bid in February or March and construct next summer.
Okay, all right.
That's what we're shooting for.
I, everywhere I go, I get asked about Hill Street. So, I think was it yesterday, talk to the optimist group, when are you going to do Hill Street? So, I think I kind of mentioned it'd be nice in front of our, you know, water tower, you know, right on Hill and Queen, just to have a sign, Hill Street is being slated for construction.
Yeah.
And also, because it was what, a six-point-one million dollar project? And it's nice for people to see that comparison, six million for one street overall for, and then what it looks like we could be getting off of the transportation package from the state of one-point-three million a year doesn't go far.
Sure.
You know, if you look at how much it just takes just off of one street.
Right. Yeah, we had, I think, apologize if my memory's not correct, but we had talked about options there and we sent specific letters to each of the property owners along the street, letting them know that the street was going to be done and that we were going to be out doing some survey work. We did not move the sign forward. We can look at doing that if that's something you would like us to do and get that placed out there.
Yeah.
No, the risk is if something goes wrong with the schedule and then you have to change the date on the sign, that usually doesn't go.
I mean, I don't know, but our counselors get questioned about Hill Street. I mean, if anybody ever, I constantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if that's our direction, we'll make that so.
I mean, if people start seeing, you know, visible signs now of work being done, then they're going to know something's been done.
Yeah.
So, that'll help.
Okay.
But, yeah. So, okay, what would you like to do with this item, counsel?
I move that we award the contract.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Sorry, Stacy, you had to stay a while. Next is appointment. This is appointing Joanne Yanomura to the library board. Library board had a vacancy because of an expiring term.
I have a move for the appointment of Joanne.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, all right, Bill? Yes?
Yeah, my neighbors are complaining about the high speed and traffic on Washington Street. There's been a couple of wrecks along Washington Seventh and Washington Ninth. Ducks being run over. If we could do something about speeding there, it would be appreciated. They're suggesting speed bumps. And you mentioned Hill Street and I say, you might mention to people that be careful what you ask for. You get Hill Street fixed up, you're going to get a whole lot more speed on Hill Street. So, I'm tempted to suggest to the neighbors, well, just wait until the street falls apart and traffic will slow down.
I come in via Washington when I come into the meetings and one of the houses on the corner's got a video camera set up.
Good.
Yeah.
That's John Kenney. He does that periodically, so it's sort of just kind of a fake one to kind of get people to slow down and make sure they stop.
Well, it's right at a stop sign, so they're stopped right there, so I'm trying to figure out what he's.
Don't tell the public about that.
He just told all seventeen people watching.
I know, because I noticed he's got it back again, so.
But there's one thing, there are some duck crossing signs.
Yes.
And I see the trees have kind of grown up and covered, so maybe they're, well, maybe I can just go out there and cut some branches off.
Yeah, I can talk to Chris, see if the street crews can check that out. They have a lot of signs and they rely on reports when they're covered quite often.
Huge lawsuit that just got settled up in Portland where somebody had an obstructed sign and didn't clear it and lost a lawsuit because of a fatality.
Somebody cleared stuff away from the sign and they got sued?
No.
No, they didn't.
Somebody got killed because they didn't stop.
Oh.
Obscured sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow. Okay, anything else, Dick?
No.
Okay, Rich?
Three things. Pacific and Hill Light is working. I, that just, it was a wonderful thing to see.
Yay.
And on the way in, I recognized that we now have people working on the crosswalk in front of Elmer's, which is nice to see. And then, the third thing is I'm headed out for my fiftieth class reunion and I'll go down there and see all those really old people.
Me too, Rich. We're all the same school.
It's amazing how all those, you know, you see all these old people and then you realize you went to school with them.
Are you talking high school or college?
High school.
High school.
Yeah. I had posted on Facebook my wedding photo, you know, because it was our fortieth wedding anniversary this weekend and I cannot believe how many people said, you guys just look like babies, you know, just little kids. So, it's like, yep, we kind of looked back, it's like, yep, we're getting old.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay, all right, Ray? Okay, all right. And I didn't have anything this evening, so, Peter.
I approve.
Okay, yeah. And Mike did have a family emergency that I hope all is well, so, you know, with him. Marilyn, anything you handed out, something?
I handed out the brochures that we had put together for just general information, primarily for Albany residents and visitors for the Eclipse. We have copies in Spanish as well as in English and we've been giving them out everywhere. They, we've handed out a ton of them at National Night Out, Festival Latino, they've been available at the library, the Downtown Association has them, Visitors Association, Chamber of Commerce, Boys and Girls Club. I have, still have stacks of them in my office. If you want to take them to places, please be.
Are you greeting that River Rhythms tomorrow night?
I'll have the girls up there and think.
Might be good to hand them out.
Do you want some more?
How many do you have?
I've got enough. I've got several hundred more.
Yeah, that might be a good way to get rid of them, so, yeah.
Want people to take them. Well, you should be getting your Eclipse classes next week.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, oh, good. And because I still have the welding glass.
Yes.
The art festival banquet?
Pardon me?
There's that, oh, the VIP dinner. I don't think we've.
That is, that's afterwards.
It's way after.
That's the weekend after the Eclipse.
Right, but it's still.
It's still on, still on, yeah, everything's still on.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Did I hear they're going to have the balloon deal this time?
No.
They're going to have.
Oh, yeah.
Well, of course.
Just no fireworks.
Yeah, no fireworks. Okay, so next week, remember the Carousel is the grand opening, ten o'clock on the fifteenth? And then, we have Cara next week. And then, we don't have a meeting on the twenty-first.
There is, yeah.
Oh, fifteenth, thanks for reminding me. On the fifteenth is we have the Human Relations Commission meeting. So, we've got two next week, two meetings and then.
Everybody's going to get that?
Yes, on that one. And then, so remember, we don't have a work session on the twenty-first, but then we have regular session the twenty-third, then our next work session is September eleventh on that.
Fifteenth is the opening for the.
Carousel, at ten A.M. Yeah. Oh, Jeff?
Just one quick item, I wanted to close the loop on a question Counsel Olson asked on Monday. When we were talking about the lift station locations and the right-of-way swaps and right-of-way vacations that we were looking at, you asked a question about if we would have to have fencing around our future lift station structure. And in looking at that, I believe it's at our discretion of whether we'll require that or not, so.
Hope you don't.
Yeah, I think we're hopeful as well.
I think it makes the neighborhood look like, hey, this is a terrible unsafe neighborhood. We've got to fence this fence to keep the public out.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the new, there weren't some new security things